Good evening, everybody. We're going to start shortly. We're just going to wait to see if a few more folk join us before we kick off. So if you could just sit tight and we'll be starting very shortly. Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. This is our very first spotlight on housing session. And if I could move to the next slide, please. My name is David Barrett. I'm one of the assistant directors within the Housing Service. And really grateful that you've given up your time to join us this evening. As a service, we are really, it's really important to us, it's a priority to us to be hearing from you. And that's just so important to us so that we can help improve our services going forwards and deliver safe and well-maintained homes. So we're delighted that you're joining us this evening. We will be sharing how we've been performing, not only the numbers, the facts and figures, but also what you as tenants and leaseholders have been telling us through our perception survey, which is part of our tenant satisfaction measures that we report to the regulator for social housing. We've had more than 1,700 responses to that survey. So we're going to be sharing those results shortly with you. But first, I'm going to take you through a little bit of housekeeping. If I could move to the next slide, please. First of all, your cameras and microphones are turned off throughout this session. But to take part, we're inviting you to use the question and answer function that you can see in front of you, and you can post a new question at any time throughout the session. You will also be able to upvote questions that others may have asked. This will make it easier for us to prioritise and respond to your questions. And I'm just going to show you a little bit more about that now. So you'll see these functions on your computer. And yeah, just a quick note for those of you that might have iPhones or iPads. You may need to look in your meeting options to find that Q and A function. But you can click on the Q and A icon, ask your question. And then if you'd like to upvote any comments, you're more than welcome to do that. Just to sort of test that that's working, we'd love to invite you to just put in the Q and A box just where you're from within Decorum, whether you're from Leverstok Green, Bovington, Tring, etc. Just maybe as a practice, perhaps you could post your location just so that we can test that everything is working. So appreciate if you could do that for us now. We have five presenters from across the Housing Service who will be each delivering a short presentation to you on their topic of expertise, their area of specialism. And so as we move through the presentations, I will introduce you to each of our speakers. We are going to invite questions at the end of each of those sessions. So if I could ask you to ask questions that are relevant to the topic that we're discussing at the time, and I'll be sharing those topics with you in a minute. We are recording this session and we will be publishing the recording on our website. We are also going to publish all the responses to the questions that have been raised. And we will be sending you a link so that you can access the recording and answers to any questions. It may be that we can't answer every question tonight. And we might need to come back to you, but we will attempt to do that this evening. And then we will publish all responses. We've also had some questions in advance, which we're hoping to cover off in the presentations. Or some of you may have already received a response to some of those. So that's a little bit around housekeeping. If I could take the next slide. And I'm going to, and the next slide, please. And so what I'm going to do now is hand over to my colleague Hannah Peacock, who is initially going to explain a little bit more about the tenant satisfaction measures before we get into the topic areas. So over to you, Hannah.
Thank you, David. So just to introduce myself again, my name is Hannah Peacock, and I am the Head of Strategy Quality and Assurance here at Decorum Borough Council. And a big part of what me and my team do is listen to our tenants and use your feedback to shape and improve our services. One of the major ways that we gather your feedback is through the tenant satisfaction measures, so the TSMs. So this evening, we wanted to feedback on how we have been doing and what you have been talking to us about how we have been doing. So can I ask for the next slide, please? Thank you. So from April 2023, all social housing landlords must collect and report on our tenant satisfaction measures. The tenant satisfaction measures were introduced as a bid to drive up standards for all of our tenants and also to give tenants a better understanding of how we are doing as landlords. The tenant satisfaction measures are national standards. These are set by our regulator, so the regulator of social housing. And they're intended to give us and you a clear picture of how well we are performing. The measures give you improved visibility and ability to hold us to account when things aren't going right. And we know we don't always get things right. And this has been some really useful feedback for us to hear. And we want to discuss that with you this evening. So there are two types of tenant satisfaction measures. So there are 10 management information measures. These are based on facts and records, like how quickly repairs are completed, how many safety checks we may have done, or how quickly we have handled your complaints. So these help the regulator for social housing to monitor the overall performance of landlords. And because they are all the same and measured in the same way, it also allows us to compare and contrast ourselves against other social housing landlords across the country. And then the next part of the tenant satisfaction measures is the 12 tenant perception measures. So this is based from a survey that we circulate to our tenants. And it tells us your feedback. And it tells us how you feel and how you view how we are doing. But both parts are really important. The management information shows us our performance on paper. And your perception survey responses shows how it feels to you as a Decorum resident. And we wanted to present both elements to you tonight. As you can imagine, there's quite a lot of detail behind the tenant satisfaction measures. We do have an incredibly detailed report, including the methodology, so how we have run the report, a full list of all of the questions that we have asked, who we asked to complete the survey, and who took the time to respond, broken down into different areas of demographics. We do also have more detail on the results themselves, including how our results compared to last year's, which was the first year we had the tenant satisfaction measures in place. And also how we compare to other social housing landlords, which is available all online. You can find out more via the link that is at the bottom of this slide. So hopefully, if you've got any questions relating to the TSMs, how we run the survey, how we run the process, you should be able to find that on that page. But we're also happy to answer any questions this evening. So the tenant satisfaction covers the following key areas. So we have maintaining building safety, keeping properties in good repair, neighbourhood management, respectful and helpful engagement, and effective complaint handling. So we will go on to explore each of those in detail this evening, showing what we are doing and how it affects you. And please remember, continue to use the Q and A as we go along. We'll have opportunities to ask questions and answer those for you as we go through the presentations this evening. So the first area, I'd like to pass over to Ricky, Ricky Lang, who is going to talk to you about how we maintain our building safety.
Thank you, Hannah. Good evening to everyone. The picture is me. Just shows you how long I've been here. They've found an old photo of me, but that is definitely me. And I'm Head of Safe Homes, so I look after the council's housing, stuck in terms of building safety and compliance. And as Hannah alluded to, this is a key TSM. So the question is, how safe do you feel in your home? Which we're trying to pick apart that question because there's lots of reasons why you might not feel safe. And 62% of residents do feel safe. It's our job to try and get that higher. And we would do that through different measures. But the key takeaways at the moment in terms of where we are performing in statutory compliance is that across the year, we've actually achieved 100% across all those measures. And provide a bit of context, so gas safety checks, example, if you live in a property with a gas appliance, we have a legal duty to actually service and maintain that annually. Fire safety checks, that would be around fire risk assessments. And again, we have a fire safety policy where we have to adhere to doing a fire assessment periodically. Could be one years, two years, or three years, depending on the actual category of the building. Asbestos safety checks, so any block where there's asbestos, we inspect annually. We do an annual reinspection of that to make sure the asbestos hasn't deteriorated. If it has done, then we'll take that away as an action and remediate it. And water safety checks is around Legionella, where we have large stored water. We carry out annual risk assessments to make sure all our plant preventative measures are in place. And whilst electrical safety checks doesn't feed into the TSM, it is an area I'm particularly proud of because all 10,255 properties, as of this morning, have an in-date satisfactory electrical test, which in the industry is, we are in the top performing quartile, and we can't get much better. We're very proud of that. And we've actually maintained that position for the last seven months. So really strong in that area. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. So again, how do we keep you safe? So how do we actually achieve 100%? It's not by luck. It is through a lot of hard work, a lot of preventative maintenance. The actual picture there is some DBC staff with our colleagues at Shoreserve. Shoreserve carry out our gas servicing as well as our electrical testing. So you would definitely have seen Shoreserve fans in the borough. You would have seen a Shoreserve operative in your property in the last 12 months if you have a gas appliance. And so we work really closely, not just with Shoreserve, we have several hiring contractors, TP Fire, Orion, EMS Lift. So yeah, we have a real combination of contractors we work really closely with, make sure that contract is buttoned up and delivering on all the KPIs that they should be. Through Power BI and data these days, we have really intelligent dashboards that are driven by certificates. So that's been a real challenge, but a real embracement of innovation, where we have certificates that are driving out compliance now. So it's not just down to human beings and spreadsheets, actually real live data coming out of the system, which is great. Service and maintenance, I get enough touched on that in terms of what we do, and communication. So communications is a big part to achieve compliance. So we talk about achieving compliance around numbers. But behind those numbers are names, and those names are tenants. And we rely on you to open your doors for us. We rely on you to make sure your properties are accessible. We rely on you to also keep not just yourself, but you, your family and your neighbours safe. And we try and do that by providing a range of communications. If you would live in a block of flats, you probably would have seen this in some of the notice boards. But just tenants of properties, it's just houses, would have hopefully received or seen some of these communications as well. And we try and tackle not just compliance issues, but general safety issues. So there's no statutory compliance to give tenants advice around how to vape safe. But we appreciate that that is a new risk. It's a new risk to us as landlords. It's a new risk to society. And you can actually, that particular middle and communication, really bold, really bright, but it's been endorsed by Harts Fire Rescue Service. So along the bottom there you can see DBC, Harts Fire Rescue Service and Harts County Council. So just shows a real demonstration of our passion around safety, working with partners such as Harts Fire Rescue Service to make sure that message is strong, is clear, is consistent. Whilst we have a job to keep you safe, you also have a responsibility to make sure that you are doing the right things in your home for you, your family and your neighbours. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. So it's a particular focus on safety in high-rise buildings, so high-risk buildings, and Pelham Court being one of them. In Decorum Borough Council, we have five buildings that meet the criteria of a high-risk building, which is over 18 metres. These particular buildings, through the adoption of the Building Safety Act, require us to carry out additional safety checks. And that will be things like inspecting flat entrance doors, cross corridor doors, providing a bespoke resident engagement strategy for those buildings. Something that we have worked on, something that we have online. And that particular page there is the Pelham Court one, but we have a page dedicated to each HRB, so high-risk building, that just provides additional information for residents. Even if you don't live in a high-risk building, there's some real good information in there about keeping you and your residents safe. So that's off the back of the Building Safety Act. We have a requirement to produce building safety cases. So a lot more scrutiny on us, but again, we are very high-performing in that area and very strong position should the regulator come calling. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. And this is just a little bit of PR for my colleagues in the community safety team. So this service doesn't actually fall under myself. It's my colleague Josh Smith who heads it up. We wanted to drop this in here because we're very conscious, going back to that TSM, the tenant satisfaction measure, around do you feel safe in your home, isn't just around building safety and compliance. It is the area you live in, it is the neighbourhoods you live in, the estates that you live in. So we work closely with our colleagues in the community safety team to make sure that we are tackling not just building safety issues, ASB issues, could be cleaning issues, could be anything. And this is a real strong picture of collaboration with, again, colleagues in Harts Fire Rescue Service and the police service. And I know that they work really closely in the community safety partnership. I'm sure there's plenty of opportunities to get involved in that. If there's something you're interested in, then please reach out to us. And so yeah, just highlighting some of the great work we do in the communities. I think my next slide is my final slide. And I'm conscious I've wrapped through that very quickly, an area I'm particularly passionate about, as I hope that comes across. But yeah, David.
Yeah, well done, Ricky. Thanks for covering that off. And really, it's just an opportunity to invite any of you that may have questions for Ricky about keeping you safe in your homes, anything that he's shared with you that you'd like to ask him. Please, now's your opportunity to put that question into the chat. We're just going to hold here just for a few seconds, just to see if any questions do come through. So yeah, just invite you to do that now using the Q and A icon.
Thanks, David. And if you're not comfortable in putting a question onto the panel, then please, you know, I'm sure we can share our details and anything around building safety or compliance. You can come to me directly, particularly keen to hear from residents that answered that they don't feel safe in their home. We really want to try and pick those reasons apart and what we can do to help you feel safe. It is your home ultimately, you know, whilst we are your landlord, it is your home. And we want to make sure that you feel safe in your home. So yeah, if you don't feel comfortable, then please contact me directly after the meeting.
And just if you've joined the call recently, great to have you with us. We highlighted at the beginning of the session that it is a real priority for us at the council to hear from you, get your views, so that we can really improve the services that we're offering. So yeah, just I think, please, please use the question box if you have anything pressing to share with us. I think we are going to move on now. And it doesn't appear to be any questions coming through for you, Ricky, on this occasion. But thanks for your presentation. And if I could ask for the next slide, please. So now I'm going to introduce to you Dan. Dan is Head of Asset Management. And Dan is going to talk to you about keeping our properties in good order, good repair. And so over to you, Dan. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can we move on to the next slide, please? So the decent home standard sets out the minimum quality standards for social housing, ensuring that homes are safe, secure and suitable for living. So I guess really the question is, what does that actually mean in practice? So essentially, there's a few criteria that we look at. So one is the property structurally stable. So you're always going to get some level of minor cracking and small imperfections. But this is really around the significant structural issues. It's free from any serious hazards. And the types of things we look at is significant dampness, mould, unsafe electrical installations or gas installations. Most of the issues we get around that are around trip hazards. And quite often, it's around things like removal of banisters or alteration to the property. So we do encourage people to talk to us before they make those changes so we don't then have to go back and redo anything. There's a lot around reasonably modern facilities, which will be the number one thing that residents speak to us about. So that's the things like new windows, bathrooms, kitchens, roof doors. Those are things that matter most to people in terms of the planned works that they want us to do. And then a reasonable degree of thermal comfort, which traditionally has always been around keeping the property adequately insulated and heated. But with the weather that we're seeing, particularly those really long hot summers, we're now more also thinking around making sure that properties aren't overheating as well, as would be able to keep them warm. So to make sure we know if our homes are meeting decent standards or not, we've been conducting stock condition surveys of all our homes. We've now got to being completed 86% of all the stock condition surveys within the last five years. So we've got some pretty good data now around what works need to happen. And what these are is a really detailed visual inspection. They happen in the property, assessing its overall condition and compliance with all the relevant housing standards. And that survey is really important for us to make informed decisions about our repairs programmes, our long-term renovations and compliance with legislation. It really is the basis of our long-term planning. So we're able to report that we've only got 2.9% of all our homes in Decorum, or the properties owned by Decorum Borough Council anyway, that don't meet the decent home standard. Now, quite a lot of them actually is assumed non-decency. So these are the ones that we haven't yet got into. So we're making an assumption about how many of them, based on what we know about our stock data, won't be compliant. Because as soon as we find a property that's not compliant, we have a contingency budget to make sure that we bring that property up to standard. More often than not, we'd be surprised that a lot of residents decline that work. So it tends to be people who don't want the upheaval of us putting a new bathroom and new kitchen in. So it may be very aged, but they're comfortable with it. And we do our best to respect that. But we also do try to explain that we can do it without creating a huge amount of disruption. But ultimately, things like that are a resident's own choice. So we know that repairs are important to tenants. And it's a really key area for my service to improve. Working with Cardo, our repairs and maintenance contractor. So really pleased with this part of our TSM results. So we currently deliver 90.5% of non-emergency repairs on time and 99.1% of all emergency repairs. And so what that means in practice is the emergency repair timescale is four hours. I know with very few exceptions that we complete, if we do miss that target, we're still attending the same day. There are a couple of rare occasions where that's been missed. But we're getting numbers around about 5,500 emergency repairs each year and about 25,000 non-emergency repairs. Now, whilst 90% completion rate puts us well up with there compared to other housing providers, probably roughly in the top 10% in terms of performance, most people would be really keen on having that. I'm quite conscious, actually, missing out on one on 10 commitments that we've made is nowhere near good enough. And so we're putting a lot of work in to make sure that we're bringing that number down and that we're increasing the amount that we can do within our published timescales. But the figures do show a strong performance and they do keep getting better. From the latest tenant perception survey, what you've told us around repairs is 63% were satisfied with repairs overall in the last 12 months, and 62% were satisfied in time taken to complete the most recent repair. And 56% satisfied with how well their home is maintained. Now, that went up roughly 4% from last year. And these numbers were taken at the end of March, beginning of April this year. But since then, we've gone up by another 4% in the first six months. So again, you know, these are lagging measures because people have got long memories when they've had a bad experience. But what we are seeing is each time we're measuring that, we are improving it and we're moving forward each year and really closing down those gaps. So here's how we've actively maintained your homes and what we're doing to continue to improve the repair service. So we monitor the contractor performance to make sure the work's carried out to the right standard. We even now co-locate with Cardo. So we work out the same office, which really helps with communication and problem solving. And also making sure that we've got a really good understanding of exactly what's going in and out of that office and what the challenges are. We support the contractors to achieve first-time fix. And that basically means that we complete the repair on the first visit. And the reason we do that is because our data from complaints and from our satisfaction data makes it really clear that's the number one driver for us to be pushing forward for, to make sure that we get the right level of satisfaction. And we continue to ask for your feedback. So whenever a repair is completed, you will get a text message or an email inviting you to take a survey on your repair. I do appreciate that the system hasn't worked for the last three or four weeks, but we're working on getting that back up and running again. I personally read every single comment that comes through that satisfaction survey and the team action. Any issue that's raised in there. So it's a really good way, if you do get it and there's a problem, let us know. And that will go there and you should get a follow-up phone call pretty quickly to resolve whatever that issue is that remains outstanding for you. Go to next slide, please. So so I think the slides went out of sync. So I've been pushing for improvement in repairs since I started. So I've been here for about 18 months now. So I started in February 2024. And one thing that we had to do really quickly was to reduce the backlog of our repairs. So when, back in February, our backlog of repairs was actually 2,888. And now today, we've got it down to 1,600, which was hard work to bring that down. So what we've done is massively reduced the number of outstanding repairs, number of jobs, which then really helps the team to get on top of the jobs that are coming in now because they haven't got loads of people chasing, loads of people asking what's happening, which then takes up their time. So what we're able to do now is be a little bit more proactive. So because we've got a smaller number of jobs that are open, we're able to do things like, so when something does fall out of the expected timescale, for example, what should happen? And we're doing it for most cases, is we have system call, we've not forgot you. So our call centre, or Cardo's call centre, every two weeks will ring up the resident who reported the repair and to give them an update. And we also ring them up before we miss the commitment we made. So there's no surprise, someone's not expecting something to be done by a certain date. It doesn't happen. We're proactively telling people. We've improved our first-time fix rate. So from there, it's 48 to 74%. And that's the figure we take from our satisfaction survey. So we ask residents, was it fixed first time? Now, it's a little bit skewed towards people who have had a negative experience, they're more likely to fill in the survey. So the data that we've got from Cardo is currently, we're on 88, 89% each month. Which again, that puts us well into the top 10% of performers because not every job can be completed first time. If you're doing a damp or mould case, for example, it takes at least three visits to get it done. You know, if something needs to dry, like plastering, you can't do those first times. So to get that to 89%, 88% is a great achievement. We've massively reduced the number of damp and mould cases. So you see here, actually, that number's from July. I had a look today, there's 158 cases today. So the numbers are still going down and we're closing down some of those long-term complicated cases. We focus on really finding what the root cause of the mould is, and that's where we're getting the success. So it's not just around washing it and covering it up. It's actually, well, why is it there? Understanding that root cause and putting a plan in place. And as we do more and more of that, we know what works. And as we do more and more of that, we know what works and what's successful, particularly the property type. And I think probably our surveyors who work in damper mould now will probably know what the cause is if we tell them an address. You know, we still go there and assess it to make sure that that is the case. But we've got a really good understanding now of what generates damper mould across all of our property profiles. Sometimes that's about helping tenants reduce condensation. And probably about seventy percent of our time, that's what our number one thing is in terms of what we're doing around damper mould. And that could be around just helping people to understand how to ventilate the property. And it sounds really obvious, but it isn't in terms of which windows do you open and when and how long. How do you get that damper to escape is really important. And so we're working more on not just on doing that, but how do we communicate that? And what way do we speak about it that really sinks into people? Whether it's any structural work or major work needed, we try and put that right as quickly as we can. Particularly now, we're going to move into winter. So obviously, the weather gets tougher, we're going to have more storms, more rain. There will be a rise in damper mould cases. So we've put in place a winter plan, knowing that that workload is going to increase. Because what we don't want to do is the workload increases and we're suddenly surprised that that's there. So there are contingency plans around how we approach damper mould. And one of our best indicators obviously is tenant feedback. And so from the repair survey that we've got over the last eighteen months, we've moved from twenty-nine percent satisfaction to eighty percent satisfaction in what we do, which is a huge improvement. But that twenty percent gap, we are determined to keep reducing it. And so every two or three months, that gap gets more and smaller and we will keep pushing that forward. So we've now covered asset management, repairs and maintenance, including the improvements we've made and the positive results that we're starting to see. So I've got time for any questions and answers that you would like to ask.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. And yes, again, if we could invite you to put any questions that you may have in the Q and A box, then Dan will do his best to respond to those. So we'll just hold here for a minute or so, just to see if any questions come in. And it's also worth noting that Dan referenced there around damper mould and the council's approach to managing that. One of our future spotlight sessions will be focusing more on this subject and how we are working hard to tackle issues of damper mould that do occur. So more about that later. But we'll just hold to see if any questions come in. I think we do have one coming in from Lawrence. Dan, I don't know if you can see that and you can respond or would you like me to read it out?
I'm just, sorry, I'm just, I'm just reading it now, sorry.
It's quite a long question that might need to be taken offline. So I'll just give you a bit of time to read it.
Okay, so. Yeah, thank you. I'm pleased they went today because actually I saw this was a pre-question that came up and I'd sent those to Cardo yesterday and asked them to make sure that they address each of them. I guess I'm really sorry, I probably can't answer that now. The only thing I can say is that occasionally with door closers to adjust them can be quite challenging. So particularly if there's any sort of air pockets that don't then, that stop the door from closing. So the door closers will be strong enough to close that door, but obviously not to slam. So I think we would need to revisit that. It's something that we may refer to our compliance team because Cardo can adjust the door closer to make sure it's closing. But if we need to do something else to soften that, they will need to make sure that it complies with the fire safety standards. So I'm sorry to shut that question, but without looking at it and understanding it, I probably couldn't, I couldn't even answer it. I appreciate that you're asking to.
On that basis, could you commit to taking that away with you and discussing that backup base and commit to giving Lawrence a response?
Yeah, absolutely. So I saw that and said he wants us to pass him on, but we will pass the right person on to you. We won't ask you to contact the right person, but we'll get you some feedback. It'll probably take about a week and we'll get back to you.
So yeah, that needs a bit more of a detailed investigation. Thanks for raising it, Lawrence. We will commit to responding more fully to you and grateful for that question.
So have I got two more minutes, David, or is that time?
Yes, you can.
It was only just some of the other pre-questions that came in that I perhaps didn't address in that presentation. So one of the themes in there was essentially, what are we doing with our stock condition data? So a lot of people were saying, well, you know, when am I going to get a new windows, new bathroom? What's happening? Or why have you done this? So we've now surveyed all of communal areas and we've done eighty-six percent of the properties. We only survey our tenanted properties. We don't survey leaseholder properties because largely we're not responsible for the internal areas of a leaseholder property. So the kitchens, the bathrooms, everything like that would be their responsibility. Historically, we've made our plan programme year on year. So we, you know, round about now, we start thinking about what the budget's going to be. Round about January, start allocating properties to it and then the contractor starts in April. But using that stock condition data now, we've got a much longer term plan. So we've now got, we've always had a thirty-year budget, but we've got a thirty-year budget that really links into what the stock condition data says. So as we're plugging that data now into our system and once we get the rest of that completed data up, we'll be able to start giving people much longer term plans. So rather than saying, someone says, I'd like a new windows and we're saying yes or no, we don't need to say that anymore. It's either yes, you're getting them now or no, you'll get them in three or four or five years' time so that we can give people a little bit more certainty.
Great. Okay, thank you, Dan. And thanks for your contributions, Dan. I think we'll move on if that's okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
No further questions in the chat, but let's move on to our next presenter. And if I could now introduce you to Ada, who is going to talk to you about respectful and helpful engagement. Over to you.
Thanks very much, David. So I'm Ada and I manage the Strategy Quality and Assurance Team. And as a team, we make sure that you have the opportunities to have your say about the housing service. So like you and many of us that work here at Decorum, a Decorum council home was the foundation of my family growing up. And this is why I'm so passionate about making sure we have meaningful engagement and that your voice is heard. So the tenant satisfaction measures are incredibly valuable as your feedback through these surveys gives us a really clear and honest picture of how well we're meeting your needs and expectations. Whilst our current results show there's room for improvement compared to our other social landlords, it gives us a really fantastic opportunity to focus on the areas that matter most to you and to work with you to deliver a better service for everyone. So if you're on the call today, you're already part of our online community and it's brilliant to see so many of you here today getting involved. So we want to make sure that there's a variety of engagement opportunities and that they're accessible for you and you're able to have your say. So we've been working hard to create even more ways for you to do this and your feedback is really making a difference. So it's not just about one person's view. It's about a range of opinions and your experiences that you share with us that help us grow and deliver the best possible services we can for you and for everyone else, all of our tenants and leaseholders. So here's what you told us in the most recent tenant satisfaction measure survey. So fifty-nine percent of you are satisfied that we treat you fairly and with respect. Fifty-one percent are satisfied that we keep you informed about things that matter. Forty-three percent are satisfied that we listen to your views and act on them. So these results are a strong step in the right direction, highlighting both the progress that we've made so far and some of the exciting opportunities that we've got ahead in our future to build trust and enhance that communication moving forward. So by placing respectful and helpful engagement at the core of what we do, we can continue to create a supportive and positive community together. So you might be saying, what are we doing to improve and deliver respectful and helpful engagement? Well, a really good example recently is our tenancy agreement review. So throughout the process of the review, we've taken tenants' thoughts and views into account. During the process, we have carried out surveys, events and activities to make sure that tenant's feedback is fed into that process. So this collaborative approach means that the final tenancy agreement will reflect the needs and priorities of our entire tenant community. This is about making sure everyone understands their rights and responsibilities clearly. And our officers also put this principle in practice every day. Through staff training and through tenant engagement, we make sure that all our interactions are fair, respectful and supportive. So we're also giving tenants opportunities to shape services through lots of different ways. We're going to start offering a thank you for your time because it's really valuable to us and you, that feedback, and offering training to help you and support you to get involved. And all of this demonstrates the value and input that we want to build with you and build a culture of fairness and respect. So we call our opportunities for involvement a menu. And that's because it's just that, it is a variety of ways that you can get involved and you can pick and choose what works for you. We're trying to make sure it's designed for something for everybody and there's lots of different ways you can take part. So I'm going to go through some of those now. So Let's Talk Decorum is our online engagement platform. So this is where you can go online and find information, ask us questions and do this at a time that suits you. So you can access this at any time if there for you. We also carry out feedback surveys with you. We run scrutiny workshops where you can join us and take a deep dive into some of our services. Focus groups where you can be part of a small group of residents who've experienced a service and tell us how it went. Mystery customers, you can tell us what you think of our services, tell us how we can improve them. And from time to time, you can take part in mystery shopping activities too. Local events, including repairs pop-ups, our community safety days and our housing open days. And next year, we'll be launching our tenant voice panel. So as part of the tenant voice panel, you will work with us to hold us to account and make sure that we're engaging with our tenants. This new panel, launching early next year, if you are interested in taking part, then please get in touch because we'd love to tell you more about that and the opportunity that it gives. We're also looking at offering tailored leaseholder opportunities to get involved. And again, we'll be looking at launching that in the new year. And finally, you can also speak to us on a one-to-one basis if that's what works best for you. But if you can think of any other ways that you'd like to get involved with us, then again, get in touch with us because we'd love to hear your ideas and see them come to life and work with you. So one of our most popular activities is our housing open day. And here are some of the photos from the last event we held, a very successful event in September. Events like this are a great opportunity for us to meet you, for you to meet staff face to face, to ask questions and learn all about the different services that we provide. And also some of our partners come along on that day as well, so you can find out about them. And these are all about our commitment to connecting with tenants and celebrating our communities. So our aim is to make a big leap forward from being a landlord that tries to do its best to one that truly listens to our tenants as you're the experts in your homes. So over the past year, we've held group activities where tenants and leaseholders told us what matters most. And now we're putting some of that feedback into action. And here's a few examples of how we're doing that and how your views are shaping decisions. So our new get involved strategy was co-developed with our tenants, leaseholders, staff and T-Paths, who are the resident involvement experts. And it's going to launch next spring. So really exciting opportunity for us to launch that co-developed document together. Feedback from our tenants through focus groups and surveys is helping us improve our repairs. And the tenancy agreement review has made sure that the rights and responsibilities are clear and easy to understand for everyone. The Our House Your Home Service Level Agreement has also been co-designed with tenants and you'll be seeing more information about that coming out soon. But that outlines all the things you can expect from us in terms of the service that we deliver for you. So these are a few examples of how we're listening and acting. So we've covered now about engagement with you, our tenants and leaseholders, and how we want to involve you in our key decisions and make sure that all our communication is respectful and helpful. So again, time for another Q and A. And if you haven't done so already, then please pop any questions in the chat for me.
Thank you, Ada. Yes, and again, just to encourage you, if you do have any burning questions you'd like to ask Ada, then please do post them in the chat now and we'll do our best to answer them. So we'll just hold just to see if any questions do come through. Okay, well, I think we can always come back if any questions do appear, but I think it's time to move on if that's okay. Thank you, Ada. If we could have the next slide now, please. And if I could move to introduce you to Oliver Jackson. And Oliver is going to talk to you about your communities and how we keep them safe and welcoming. So over to you, Oliver.
Thanks, thanks, David. Good evening, everyone. So yeah, I'm here today to talk to you about neighbourhood management. So neighbourhood management covers quite a broad spectrum of services and areas. And as such, we have a number of TSMs that we report on in relation to neighbourhood management, including how well we keep your communal areas clean and well-maintained, how we contribute to your local neighbourhood and crucially, how we respond to and manage antisocial behaviour within the borough. Have the next slide, please. So underlying all of the work that we do in relation to antisocial behaviour and to elaborate on what Ricky spoke about earlier, we are key members of the Decorum Community Safety Partnership. Now, the Community Safety Partnership is a group and a network of statutory and non-statutory organisations that work together to come up with responses to protect local communities from crime and the impact of crime. Now, as well as antisocial behaviour, the Community Safety Partnership looks at different things as well, such as drug and alcohol abuse, domestic abuse, hate crime, modern slavery and radicalisation and anti-extremism. Along with ourselves, we work very closely with our statutory partners such as Police Force, Fire and Rescue, West Harts Clinical Commissioning Group, Probation Service and the Police and Crime Commissioners Office. As well as those statutory organisations, we work really closely with a number of non-statutory partners such as CGL, West Harts College, Trading Standards and DENS, our local homeless charity. That's a really important partnership that we're part of because it really looks at providing a holistic approach to managing antisocial behaviour and crime and all the other areas that impact on people feeling safe within their local community. Reassuringly, within Decorum, we have a very low number of antisocial behaviour cases per our 1,000 homes, which is what we report on via the TSMs. It's a very low count when considering the numbers in other areas of the UK, which is really encouraging because generally that means that actually the borough is generally speaking a safe place to live. In terms of how we as an organisation manage antisocial behaviour, so it's two-tiered. For very low-level ASB, our tenancy management team cover off low-level antisocial behaviour. And a key tool that we use to do that is by using the tenancy agreement our tenants sign up to when they take on a property. As Ada has touched on previously, we're currently going through the process of consulting on our tenancy, revised tenancy agreement. And I'd like to encourage everyone involved today and listening to this recording that we really would like to hear your views on the draft tenancy agreement because it really is an opportunity to influence what that looks like and how that feels. The tenancy agreement gives us a number of different powers to manage our tenancies, including antisocial behaviour. But equally, it's about keeping people safe in their own homes and in their local communities. Where antisocial behaviour moves on from that low-level ASB, we then refer cases over to our community safety team. Now, we recognise the impacts that antisocial behaviour can have on our residents and to the community as a whole. And we understand it can have an impact on individuals and households and the wider community. So it's an absolute priority of ours to tackle it as early as possible and respond to any issues that are reported to us. The community safety team have a number of legal powers that they can use to respond to ASB. And we work very closely with a number of different partners to use those powers appropriately. But we recognise that it's really important for us to take a preventative approach to antisocial behaviour as well. And we work closely with our partners to look at the root cause of ASB. We carry out a number of different engagement opportunities to provide education to different groups around the impact of antisocial behaviour. And we do a lot of work with youth-related services to try and stop ASB before it even starts. So there's an awful lot of partnership working that goes on out there in the community. We also like to talk to the communities themselves, to our local residents, because we recognise that as well as some borough-wide initiatives, it's really important that we tackle the issues that are affecting that local community. We are quite a, Decorum's quite a split borough in terms of having urban areas, but also having some rural areas. And antisocial behaviour can look very different depending on what part of the borough that you live at. So it's really important that we engage with our communities to understand the impact that ASB is having on them. In terms of hate incidents, again, the report of hate incidents per thousand homes is quite low. But we recognise that any report has a lasting impact. And it's a commitment alongside our partners to reduce that further. I'm really pleased to say that from this month, the forum, so our head offices in Hemel Hempstead officially become a third-party hate crime reporting centre in Decorum. Now, what that does is it provides the forum, our offices, as a safe, accessible space for people to come into, to come into our offices and report hate crime incidents without the need to contact the police directly. And we feel that this is a really important step to responding to hate crime as it may remove some barriers that people have to reporting hate crimes. And if we could move on to the next slide, please. So as I said earlier, part of the TSMs when we look at neighbourhood management relates to our contribution to our neighbourhoods and to how we keep our communal areas clean and well maintained. And we've put a picture up of our housing cleaning team there, who play a key role in the delivery of those services and in terms of our performance on those particular tenant satisfaction measures. Now, we recognise that we're on a bit of a journey with our cleaning team. Significant progress has been made with them. We are very pleased to say that satisfaction with how we keep our communal areas clean and tidy is improving. But we also recognise that there are, there's progress still to be made. And we are committed to that as an authority to make those improvements. So we are looking at additional resources for the team. We are looking at the opportunity to digitalise their processes, to support them to be able to report issues in our communal areas quicker and more efficiently and to be able to provide cleaning services to our residents across the borough that are of the highest standard. We have done a lot of work in developing what the specification for the team looks like so that they're clear on what they need to be doing when they go to our properties. And again, I think that's reflected within our improving satisfaction. But it's not the cleaning team alone that are able to achieve that. We work very closely with a number of different services, both within the council and outside of it. We work extremely closely with our colleagues in Clean, Safe and Green to ensure that our green spaces are maintained and are managed appropriately in terms of fly tipping, removal of graffiti and litter picking. We're working very closely on a pilot scheme with our colleagues at CSG to continue to provide a really timely response to fly tipping because we recognise that that has a real impact on our local communities. Next slide, please. In terms of improving our neighbourhoods, as well as managing antisocial behaviour and ensuring that our communal areas are well maintained, we recognise the importance of having communities that people feel proud of and that enjoy using the space that is provided there. And we are working on a number of initiatives to ensure that people have the opportunity to enjoy those spaces. Our tenancy management team carry out a schedule of estate inspections, which cover the whole of the borough, which identify issues again, such as fly tipping, gardens not being well maintained, inappropriate use of communal areas, inappropriate use of green spaces. We cover the whole borough and I'm really pleased to say that our tenancy team have continually achieved 100% of those inspections. And we are rapidly moving from communities that had a number of issues to those that are ranked as green. So we use a RAG rating system to rate those areas. And we work closely with those communities to identify improvements and opportunities to make them more usable and provide the opportunity for individuals and families to enjoy those spaces. We've been working very closely with a number of organisations such as Sunnyside Rural Trust to develop community gardens throughout the borough. And most recently, we've developed one up in Adyfield, the Windmill Garden. We carried out a lot of engagement activity with the local area to understand what they wanted and what they needed and worked with Sunnyside Rural Trust to develop an area that is usable, accessible and people can enjoy throughout all seasons of the year and for many years to come. We are working closely with Sunnyside Rural Trust to look at additional opportunities. And we already have plans to develop more gardens within the borough. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you may have around neighbourhood management.
Yeah, thanks, Oliver. And yeah, really interesting. And yeah, as Oliver's indicated, please do use this opportunity now to drop your questions into the Q and A box. Oliver, we've already got a couple of questions coming in. One is around dog mess around the building and the issues that that's creating. And also a question that's really highlighting that post the cleaning team entering the building to carry out the cleaning, what the resident is indicating is perhaps the cleaning is not quite up to standard. So I guess without answering for you, you'd probably be keen to know where these locations are. And perhaps we could take it offline and take a further look. But is there anything you want to comment or add to those two particular questions?
Yeah, yeah, there is, David. And absolutely, we'd be keen to know specifically where those comments came from because we carry out a number of checks and audits on our cleaning team to ensure that standards are high. So we're happy to look into any individual concerns. Generally speaking, we want to make it absolutely clear what our tenants and leaseholders can expect from our cleaning team. So if we don't meet those standards, we want our tenants and leaseholders to be able to identify that quickly. And we want a quick referral process into the team so that can be responded to. So I think that communication and consultation with tenants and leaseholders is really important so that people know what to expect. In terms of the dog fowling, we recognise that that has an impact on people's use and enjoyment of the green spaces. Where possible, if we can identify the individual, then we will be tackling that particular individual using the powers that we have.
Oliver, and yeah, so just thank you for raising those questions. And yeah, we'd love more detail. I think you've just posted the location, so that's good. We've got that. And yeah, we'd love you to contact us personally. That would be really helpful so that we can follow that up for you. Thanks for sharing that. Let's move on. Oliver, thank you for your presentation. Let's move on to the final presentation before we come into land, which is around complaints and going to invite Hannah to share thoughts on how we handle complaints. So over to you, Hannah.
Thank you. And I know from the questions that we received ahead of tonight's session that complaint handling and how we talk to tenants and how we listen to your questions and feedback to you is something that we aren't always getting right. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the process and also about what we are doing in order to get it right. So in terms of the process, we have a three-stage process. We have stage one, where a member of the relevant team will investigate and respond to your complaint within 10 working days. So they will tell you whether they uphold your complaint. And they will also outline any actions that they are taking that help to resolve the issue that you have complained about. If you are unhappy with the response that you have received at stage one, you are able to escalate that to a stage two. This is where a more senior member of staff will review your complaint and the complaint response you have received. And they will provide you with a response within 20 working days. So that response will tell you what steps they've taken to investigate your complaint, to review the stage one complaint response, to see what has happened with the complaint since the stage one response was sent out and provide any new actions that might be taken at that stage two level to hopefully bring to a close the original complaint. However, if it is still not resolved to your satisfaction, the Housing Ombudsman is there as the next step in the complaint process. They are an external independent organisation and they are there to help tenants if we are not getting it right through both the stage one and the stage two process. I do want to say it is a rare occurrence for things to go to the ombudsman, but it is there and it's there to support yourselves as tenants. So we do have some positive results to outline to you this evening. We have seen 86.5% of stage one complaints responded to in time. We know it's not where we want it to be. We should be getting it higher. However, we have seen a 26.3% increase from this time last year. So some of the work that we have already been doing to improve our complaints and our complaint responses is proving effective. We've seen 77.8% of stage two complaints delivered on time, which again has gone up nearly 20% on last year. Overall, we received 57.8 stage one complaints per thousand homes. And that is then dropped to 7.9 for stage two complaints. We have really focused in 2324 on improving our response times. And you can see that in the results that I've just outlined to you this evening. So more issues are being resolved quickly and effectively. However, we've got a very big scary number in front of us of 23%. That is the satisfaction that you are telling us with how satisfied you are with how we handle your complaints. That's not good enough and it tells us very clearly that we must do better, as does some of the comments and the questions that we received again ahead of this evening. We are listening. We are strengthening the process to make it faster, to make it clearer and to make it more responsive so that you can be confident that your concerns are being properly addressed. So we are committed to improving the way that we handle complaints so that you feel heard and supported every step of the way. So what we are working on is meeting the deadlines when replying to complaints so that you are not left waiting. We have a new digital platform where we operate all of our complaints through. They provide us with automatic reminders to tell us when a complaint is due and really puts the pressure on to make sure that we are getting our responses out on time and fully answering the questions that you have raised or the concerns that you have raised in your complaint. We also use a platform called CX Feedback. This means that when you complete, when we complete various services for you, such as a repair, such as an antisocial behaviour case, when those are closed, you will receive an automatic survey. As Dan mentioned in his presentation on repairs, he is looking at every single comment that his service receives. And really, really, it's a fantastic way for us to hear directly about your experiences of the services you are getting and where we could improve. We are working with the Housing Ombudsman Complaint Handling Code and Best Practice to make sure that our approach on how we handle our complaints is fair and consistent. We are now going to be quality checking our responses. So we have got a matrix of different elements that we will be measuring our complaint responses against. So essentially, we'll be able to score the complaint responses to make sure that they are informative, that they are empathetic and they are treating people as humans. And they are also making sure that we are responding to your concern and complaint. We are also going to be running focus groups with tenants. So touching on what Ada was talking around in terms of respectful and helpful engagement. Focus groups are a great way for us to understand directly from you how you feel we are doing in our complaint processes. We are also going to be introducing compulsory training for all housing staff. So this training makes sure that everybody handles complaints professionally and consistently, responds in a fair, clear and timely way and that we learn from your feedback in order to make services better. So that's something that we really want to notice is where we are seeing repeat complaints coming through regarding a specific service, specific team, specific location has popped up in the chat this evening. It gives us that opportunity to learn from and to really reflect on how we can make that area better. By equipping our staff with the right skills, we are making sure that complaints will be resolved quickly, respectfully and effectively. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have around complaint handling. I know we had some comments come through prior to the session regarding timeliness and communication along the complaint process way. Hopefully, what I've just outlined to you answers some of those questions, but I'm happy to take any others.
And just while we wait for any questions to come in, thanks, by the way, Hannah, that was useful. There is a question that's coming around tenancy changes, which we will respond in more detail through our Q and A responses. But just to reassure the tenant that if you do have a secure tenant, that that actually can't be changed. And you know, there is a downsizing policy that does exist. So if you are wanting to reduce the size of your home in the future, then that is a policy that you can access. But as far as secure tenancies go, they can't be changed. So we'll just give it a few seconds just to see if. So we'll just give it a few seconds just to see if any other questions come up for you, Hannah, on complaints. Otherwise, we will come into land. Okay, so if we could move on to the next slide, please. And Hannah, did you want to um just finish off on this particular slide?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um what we have been talking to you about tonight are the results from our 24 or 25 um tenant perception survey and uh the TSMs uh from that time period as well. We know that we are already halfway through, uh, almost halfway through uh this year, so 2526. And we have already started um the surveys going for this, this new year that we are um going through so far. Uh, you may have already been contacted to take part. Um, we have been sending out uh the surveys to tenants and encouraging people to, to join in. So this slide in front of you this evening is a brief update on our current uh TSM scores. Um, which shows that we have currently improved on all measures um since last year's results. The work that we've outlined to you tonight, um we hope will continue to drive these improvements in how our tenants uh view us as your landlord and how you perceive the services that we deliver to you. So, um, I, I just wanted to highlight some particularly encouraging uh highlights. Um, so the satisfaction with repairs is continuing to rise. Um, so we are seeing uh 66.2% uh of tenants satisfied with how we are handling uh your repairs. Um, antisocial behaviour um is almost 9% uh higher in terms of satisfaction with how we handle antisocial behaviour um complaints than last year's performance. And hopefully, the work that we've outlined to you again this evening, um, we'll start to, to see some real impact in that area. More tenants are telling us and that they feel safe in their homes. So um the, the comments from Ricky around uh what we have been doing to um deliver our, our, our building safety engagement around high-rise um and fire risk safety. Um, some really, um, it's some real improvements there. And we are also really pleased to see that overall satisfaction in the council has increased to nearly 63%. Um, so we're really, really pleased to see that, but we know that there's still work to be done.
Thanks, Hannah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and yeah, there are no further questions posted in the chat. So let's just come into land. And um lastly, I just want to thank you all for um tuning in and giving up your time to listen to what we've got to, to say and share with you tonight. And also for your questions, we will be sending you a link so that you can review um the recording of this session along with um all the questions that have been asked. We will be providing um a list of responses. Um, continue to engage with us, please. We've got a QR code and a link here that leads you to how you can get involved. Um, so we really appreciate that. And then just lastly, if I could just take the last slide, just a reminder of our new My Decorum uh platform, which is a new flexible way to access all our services and information. And um we'd invite you to sign up to this. Um, can be used for looking in on your council tax, for rent statements. It has uh lots of opportunity for you to engage with the council digitally. So um, thank you once more. Thank you to my colleagues uh for presenting and speaking and for uh the Back of House team. And I am now going to end the session. Thank you.